Because we have this whereas. It's because we have this whereas and we're committing to this. Can we just go with this instead of the motion that's recommended in the staff report? Instead of doing both, I think what you were trying to do is do both and it's just, there's just too many things.
Yeah, so I, um, that's fine with me. Uh, I was thinking that. The council subcommittee wanted to include some topics into the ISM and the.
I thought that was ISM and the amendment.
That's true.
This is, that's a different.
Right, right, right. Okay. So, so we can take care of the post housing element plan, especially device, a separate motion entirely.
There's two, we have two topics.
As I understand it, and you pipe in here, we have two topics that we suggested would be in this enhanced part of the MMRP. And that was the, the secret guidelines and supplemental safety measure. Right? Do you think you might go get this right?
Yeah, those two are topics three and four.
Right, exactly. Oh, good. So I'm just trying to get us back to, yeah, just trying, just trying to get us back to, like, we know what we're talking about.
Right. And what we had considered and not presented because we couldn't figure it out is how to get from the key approaches, however you number them, um, to something that was as, you know, process oriented and helpful. So my concern about trying to do one, two, three, and five as being included somehow in something. Um, you know, we're now saying keep and expand for progressive prevention. I think that's already covered. In Don Bullard's memo, pursue widening roads. That's already, I think, covered in what he sent this evening, right? Reestablish multiple access and egress routes. Well, I think we're agreeing to a process for figuring that out. I don't intend myself to know today it's feasible and I want to commit to it because I don't know the cost of it. I mean, of, well, any of these, I'm just picking that as an example of multiple access and egress routes. I mean, that's a big ticket item, right? It's recommended. I get it. But tonight, do I know how to get there? No. And then five is conduct site specific individuated. I think that's already in Don's, um, memo from this evening. So I'm not sure I know what to adopt now and I don't think we can adopt something that's like, it's process oriented. Here's a thorough evaluation process. I think that's what you're committing to do in this. So I don't know it makes sense to do much on those at this point.
I agree. I feel like this whereas trumps, it covers all of these.
I agree.
So I think if by doing that, we're saying, because these are, a lot of these are then nested within the safety element. And others are nested within the post approval process. The problem is we just haven't had a, had the time to triage where these things go. And so I feel like we need just this umbrella language.
I think that's good.
Say we're gonna do it.
I think that's good. And I also think that our two hours is up. We've had, uh, we're on our second hour and, uh, we're 16 minutes late for our break. Our, our doctors recommend.
This time, I'm not the one asking for a break. So, yeah, can you, can, yeah, can we just finish? Let's finish this and then.
We've got this, we've got this addition to one of the resolutions. So this is, this language is now, we can use this to sort of cover the Don's, Don's key recommendations from the previous ones.
And the, and this email that he sent us. Yeah, this gets both, this gets both of those.
That's like the cover on top of both of them. Yeah.
So at the, at the bottom of the resolution is be it further resolved with the references, that can be removed.
Where's the, where's that resolution?
Page nine of 185 for the packet page. So now that we have this language, um, we don't need that be a further result, right, Cara?
I think that that, the one, two, and five through eight refer to the topic in the college memo, not the key fire method. Yes.
This is page nine.
Nine.
And this is the very last.
The council's already made a motion.
Right, we already did that last.
At the last meeting.
Right. And so this is codifying.
Oh, codifying that motion. Okay. Sorry, I take it back then.
Yep. So this, okay, so this language that's on the screen would go right after the, after the eight points, but before be it for the result?
What page, John?
Page nine. Page nine of it.
The, the whereas clause goes.
Oh, or goes up in the other whereas.
The whereas is, it could be the. It would be the seventh whereas.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, since these aren't numbered, is it, is that the last whereas? What's the seventh whereas? Well, but wait for more. Seriously?
It would be the seventh whereas, okay, so.
It would, it would come, it would, okay, it would, it would come after whereas the planning commission at a regular meeting on February 15th, 2023, recommended approval of the ISM and D and before whereas the planning commission's February 15th, 2023 resolution. That's, that's where seven goes. Is that, is that right?
Um, just for the record, I don't want you to have expectations to the contrary. I'm not able to vote on this tonight. So you keep going. I'm getting too confused. This is too important and I'm not going to be able to do that, but I'm one of five.
Do you guys want to bring up, it might be helpful, the screen share as you're going to do so people can see where you're putting this whereas?
I'm gonna go to ladies room.
Oh, for goodness.
All right, we're gonna take a break and come back at 11:30. Okay, we're back. We are going to make a quick list of items we need to get through right now. So, um, we, the, I'm, I'm reading from the recommendation on page two, which is first is adopt the ISM and D and the MMRP. And then, uh, but there's, there's two things. I'm just, and the second is adopt the housing element and. We're deep into item one. Um, so we've got this and, yeah, can we share a screen and just, just go through the resolution? That we're, we're, just, just so people can see where we're adding this language that's on the screen right now.
Really authoritatively so that everyone thinks I know what I'm doing. Um, what, what do you want me to pull up?
Well, I could do it too. I'll pull up the resolution.
We want clarity where the whereas clause from, uh, what's had fires attorney would go into the ISM and D.
Okay, but Cara, is there not a draft of that? We just need to insert it into the one in the packet or what are we?
I was just gonna pull, I was gonna pull up the original one from the packet and just point out where, where this need might be done. Oh.
There we go.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, so this is what, this is what we have arrived at and this would be the resolution that we would be adopting.
Yellow highlighted clause is the amended clause of the council. And that would be incorporated into the reservation in the place.
Can you increase the font there so I can try and see if, where, actually, is it on here? Okay, sorry. I, I got it. Sorry, sorry.
Okay, um, Fire Marshal Bullard has his hand up, so I, um, I think I will actually invite him to speak. Involved in this. Don, go ahead.
Thanks. I just wanted to make clear that, uh, whatever resolution, uh, you guys adopt, that it refers to the seven mitigations that were sent to the town council through Howard and Jeff tonight. So that's, that's the list that we sent over and emailed. That's the one you should be looking at. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, we're looking at that list and this was the language that, that town attorney Silver and your, your sequel attorney were agreed to that would sort of incorporate that, that list.
Yeah, correct. Okay, thanks. Just wanted to make, okay, good, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the resolution we consider.
Is it at this point though, that we also have to consider the addendum to the MMRP because that is part of this?
Sure, yes, yes.
So, okay. We haven't had any.
What, what's this change right there? Uh, that. One, two, three, and five. Yes, I am deleting that change because, um, that I, I got confused between the key fire methods and the elements in the college memo. And so, um, the language in the current resolution is, is correct.
No. No, it, it. Yeah, it's one, two, and five through eight.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what, yes, so I am deleting that, those corrections.
It's correct.
Which correct, correct is written, is correct is written.
Yeah, it's correct.
Does three and four go in the MMRP?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so this is the resolution that we would adopt as the, to approve the ISM and D. And then the MMRP, can we look at that? Let's click more buttons.
Did have a question on what was just up there, just to confirm it's accurate. Number four on the ISM and D resolution. It started out, number three said the planning commission has reviewed. And then in four, it said the planning commission finds as if it's currently finding. Should either that be, are we referencing the planning commission's finding or our own in, in three and four? Yeah, yeah.
So, um, do you want me to put it on the screen or, or do you want to just point out where?
Yeah, number, paragraph three and four talks about the planning commission has reviewed and considered. And then four goes on to say the planning commission finds. So to me, it sounds like this is a planning commission resolution, not a town council resolution. How should it read?
No, it should be the town council.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything else on this resolution?
Um, the whereas the town council further, town council recommended.
What number?
Uh, I'm in the whereas clause on page eight. And it references the key approaches for fire safety presented by Fire Marshal Bullard. And does that need now? Or is that just talking about what the planning commission had recommended and is good at this? I'm, I'm just trying to pressure test the references to the planning commission where they occur are intent, intended. So if you can look at the, what's the third whereas? That, I think this one is actually right, but I'm, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Dan.
Okay, so if those are, if, if the resolution, we're okay with the resolution, let's look at the MMRP.
So is this the time when I share the wording updates on the topics?
Uh, sure, okay. Do you want to share your screen? Why don't you share your screen?
Just the MMRP topic.
Topics three and four, which are.
Right, okay, yeah.
So for the addendum, additional policies, I had wanted the longer version of the language and these are not requirements, but they are enhancements. So I don't know how people, others feel, but I would at a minimum put policies and guidance as the title.
Wait, so change this, what's on the screen, we changed to policies and guidance?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to change what's on the screen too? Craig, can you update the?
I was gonna make the update so we know where we're talking about it. Okay. Sorry, to distract.
You're, you're talking about the target.
Yeah, and you're, you're gonna go through the slide. So I think Craig going through the slide, we should do that first.
And then we come back to you, Craig.
Yeah.
Okay.
So basically, we just, um, added guidelines and thresholds since that seemed clear and added the section, the code, the thresholds.
So we're saying thresholds versus CCR section.
Right, which is a section that just lies the thresholds.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's the.
I'm sorry, through the mayor, um, I, I thought the pre, I thought the change, um, was intentional when you changed the language from what came from the Targ brothers memo into your version and now this is changing back. Is that, that's intentional that you want to change it back to thresholds and reference the, um, state law section on thresholds?
Yeah, because it seemed like it was clear and it captured what we were after was to generate the thresholds.
Okay.
But again, in the same process that we talked about before of, you know, basically going and getting other people's, you know, not starting from whole cloth, but getting other people's threshold definitions and then tuning them to what we need. So, yeah, it wa, it was intentional.
I have a question because we did discuss this the other night. And so my understanding is there was significance of, of the change in the wording from established local, established local guidance versus establishing local thresholds. So I just would like to, if there is a, there must be a significance because you changed the word. So I want to make sure I understand what that is.
I, I think we were just, it, it got to the point where it was like, it wasn't clear what the language is trying to say. And this was clear, like this is, guidelines and thresholds seem to be something that's sort of established in the law. So that, where we're sort of making up terminology before, we were trying to be a little vaguer, but I think we decided it's like, oh, this is really what we were just trying to get the threshold.
So thresholds has a specific meaning in sequel law, so.
Right.
This is more explicit than, than what we, we've gone back to the more explicit version of this, just to be clear. And is there any consequence of doing that?
That's what I want to understand. Yeah, exactly.
Um, the only thing from my point of view was that once we got into this work and realized we didn't need a formal sequo threshold of significance, that would still be an option. With this language, then we're actively pursuing a formal threshold for those categories.
That's. I keep getting picked up, by the way.
Yeah. Sorry, folks, we lost our screen share for a minute.
So it's just a policy decision, whether you want to leave the door open to be a little bit more general or whether you want to be very specific and say that for sure the town is going to pursue the thresholds of significance.
What, it's guidelines and thresholds, so we don't have to decide today what we're committing to. That just says local thresholds.
The action says establish local thresholds.
Oh, the action itself.
Yeah, that's what, and that's what the planning commission voted for. I mean, what's the likely, I mean, what, what the situation where we, we encounter what you're saying, which is we wouldn't, we decide we didn't actually need to do a threshold?
We just wouldn't know until we got into it.
But this is committing us to something more rigorous.
Yes, in my view. But it, like I said, it's truly a policy question. It's just a matter of what level of commitment do you wish to make?
Yeah, I mean, well, I was gonna say, explain why, why you switched.
For a reason, yeah.
You kind of explained it.
Um, so I think what we were after here was if we get new housing, particularly multifamily housing, that we've come up with the thresholds, that we thought about them ahead of time and we don't have to debate them when the project actually shows up. So that was the idea. And if we don't have thresholds, then we're gonna be back to, we're gonna be debating them because we just have these sort of vague things. So that, that was the idea of doing that. And then the next page sort of further emphasizes that by, you know, increased consistency and efficiency. The idea was that people would know what they were gonna get and that when they'd prod something up, we would say, no, this, these are the thresholds we're gonna apply to you. Not here's kind of some general, you know, guidance on what we're trying to do. So that, that's, that was the thinking. So again, it's, it's a policy thing. I appreciate, you know, that we can decide whether we want to make this policy change, but that, that was the thinking here.
I'll be honest, I mean, I, I totally get the intent and I appreciated that was the intent to begin with. I feel like people feel more comfortable where there's this kind of more sequel based language. Um, and if that's what's required, I, you know, we have so much to get through that I don't want to make a stink about it. But I am concerned, I mean, I don't really understand the significance in terms of what this means in six months if we have one word versus another. And if it's that important to you guys, I'm willing to, you know, but it's, it's a little hard. It's a legal term and that's, I'm not a lawyer, so I have to. And I haven't been through this, making a secret.
Can you go back to the previous page more? Can you go back to previous?
Do, yeah, this, this one here, right? Yeah, yeah, that's, got it.
I think it's added a le, another level of complexity.
But I think it added, I mean, if, what worries me in this conversation right now is if that's what you think, then it's a good thing we put it in here because this was the intent and we were just trying not to get, at least I was trying not to be too lawyerly. But now I'm hearing the lawyers say, oh, well, if that old thing, that actually meant something different and this is, so this is, I think, what we want. We want to make sure that when these projects show up, that people know what they're, they're gonna be responsible for and we know how to met, you know, basically evaluate their projects. So, I mean, this was intentional.
Yeah.
It's, whereas if we get vague, then I feel like then why do we bother to do this at all? Because if it's still vague, then we'll be right back in the, oh, well, now we gotta figure it out when the projects show up. So, again, my hope here is that we're not looking at doing a major thing. We're looking at taking some reference, um, thresholds from other jurisdictions and then looking at sort of our specifics and then doing a little tuning and being done. Not starting from some, you know, first principles. And that was what we took, talked about adopting similar measures from other communities. So, I mean, I really expect this to be, you know, I can pick a number, but, you know, 20 hours of a lawyer and, and probably another maybe 40 hours of public, you know, between staff and, and the public and the council and stuff. But not more than that. There's not meant to be a, you know, a six month process.
I, I'm sorry, through the mayor, adopting thresholds for these categories is definitely a six month process. And it's way more hours than, um, than what you just said, way more. Because we have to, it's not just picking and choosing, it's going through a public process that is lengthy here to discuss the details of, particularly how are we gonna judge aesthetics? So that's why I was saying guidance might be sufficient because guidance would be enough to advise an environmental review consultant how to analyze it as opposed to the official legal process of adopting thresholds of significance. So we have to go through a planning commission review and a council review and have public conversation around all these things. So I just want to make sure that you, you know what I mean? You understand that that, that's probably the undertaking we're talking about here. If we're talking about legal thresholds for all these categories.
And I don't think that's gonna happen in eight months, given everything else that we're trying to do.
But it is important. I mean.
Well, I.
We're trying to get, I mean, these are the areas where people were saying that doesn't intuitively make sense to me that there's no ISM and D significant impact. I get that. But these are the areas where the public does want more, more protections. And, you know, you could, you know, punt a little bit by saying local guidelines and thresholds in both places. But at the end of the day, it's an important aspect to keep, and, you know, let's pull what Gilroy in Los Angeles and others have done and just see, I mean, we, we're uninformed tonight what those have done. But the light digging I did was that there are preexisting things to take and run with.
Well, yeah, but we're, but, but line director Russell is telling us that, that even with, even with a cookie cutter approach, you still have a process for public and, but, no, I mean, you can't avoid, you can't, you can only cut out so much of the work here.
Yeah, I guess we're, we're trying to separate that to the duration versus the effort.
I mean, I, yeah, and I mean, I guess, I guess my question is, can, can local guidance achieve the same enhanced clarity for developers that we're looking for or for sequel reviewers that we're looking for?
And I, I don't think I'm saying that we wouldn't adopt thresholds of significance. I'm saying that we're not informed on this yet and we need to get into it and decide or make recommendations to you about, is guidance sufficient or do we need to adopt formal thresholds? Because it, that's my hesitation is that, um, especially some of these topics, aesthetics and wildfire are really big topics to take up.
Yeah.
What, is, is it possible if we, uh, repeat the wording in the, um, on the next slide where you, you do include the words guidance as well, guidance and threshold? And we could decide about which ones need to be the legal thresholds based on as we're learning more?
Previous slide.
Sorry.
The continued, right, this one.
I thought I saw somewhere, yeah, guidelines and thresholds in the second paragraph in the comments.
And we could say establish local guidance and where warranted thresholds pursuant, you know, and sites equal CCR section one of five zero six four. We could turn it, we could say local guidance or, or thresholds as, as warranted.
I want to be clear, I am not trying to take away the intent.
Yeah.
I am fully on board with the intent. I just don't want to get us stuck. And if, if your expectation is that it can be a more streamlined process, Craig, I don't want to get us stuck in a way that we won't be able to do that. I'm just trying to keep it comprehensive with total agreement with the intent.
And I want to give us a flexibility, but also room to pursue thresholds if that's what turns out to be the.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's getting late, but, and it just feels to me like either we're doing thresholds or we're not, so.
Well, but, but we don't know. And, and I think the point is that we might be able to achieve the same what we're after here without the thresholds, which is a much more evolved process. I guess I'm trying to give us the opportunity, the, the possibility of achieving this, you know, by doing this rigorous process upfront.
Yeah, I, I'm just struggling to figure out how we're gonna get the same result, but somehow it's gonna be easier.
Are we reopening the motion from last week? Is that what we're doing? Are we reopening the motion from last week? Is that what we're doing?
I.
Trying to understand.
So I can tell you how, where, where this came from. I mean, originally we went through this, we were trying to incorporate the fire marshals, um, issues in an additional topic and then decided that it really felt like it was a safety element issue. And I think we've worked through that, but in that process, you know, we sort of cleaned up some of the stuff that was here. And so that's, yeah, so it would be, it would be adding these things as, I mean, reopening.
What are the other, other than thresholds and some of that, like a couple of little things?
Oh, yeah, so there's, so there's basically this one. This is basically just sort of a little bit more kind of the point of being consistent and being efficient when we get to it. And then this one, adoption of an evacuation plan. Because I think we've heard that over and over again as being critical. And I think that's it. Let me just double check because it's late, it's topic four. So we go back to topic three. I mean, I would, I guess I would just suggest that we, we sort of take a either or approach and say, we will, you know, establish local guidance and where, and if necessary, local thresholds per, um, per CCR section one five zero seven six four concerning topics such as, and just give us, give ourselves the option of doing it as a guidance if we decide the threshold. And then that would, and that, we could make the policy decision later.
The reality is if and when this comes up, if there's discomfort with it not being a threshold, we can readdress it. So, I don't know. Well, the intent had been to try and give some life to the, uh, planning commission's recommendation, which reads, each municipality is required to establish sequel guidelines, and our public agencies are further encouraged to establish local significant thresholds, not inconsistent with a reference. And it would help clarify and standardize analysis and decision making. So, I mean, that is the goal. Um, guideline, and then it said guidelines and significant thresholds would further help ensure uh, project level environmental assessments, address and evaluate impact. So, you know, I feel like, making it too flexible takes away some of the intent here, um, which I had supported. And I'm not trying to create work for the sake of work, uh, at all. I'm trying to figure out the most streamlined way to get there. But to me, it, we're, we're losing something if we don't have some reference to the threshold. So I want to keep something there.
Well, I think, you know, I want to keep the threshold. I just want to say that if we could, if guidance were sufficient, we could. We don't have, I don't, I was trying to keep thresholds as part of this language without committing strictly to.
I like what the planning commission was trying to set up here.
No, I understand. And I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with them. It's just, I, I, knowing that, especially if we're trying to do this in eight months. So like, if it's, if we have to go thresholds, chances are it's nothing, nothing, change the timeline.
Yeah, I mean, what if we'd made, just made it eight to 12 of the threshold? Because I don't think we're going to have major projects that we get. And that's when this, I mean, that's the importance of this. So, I mean, what do you think, Jude? If there's a, as a way of.
It's designed to protect against the major project that's unexpected and comes in, so.
Right, but do we think, I mean, I guess the question is, do we think in the next 12 months, we're going to be faced with, I mean, I know we, there's no way to know for sure, but I'm just trying to see if there's a compromise here of if we spread it out, give it a little bit more time, but then we keep the basically, um, sort of tighter language.
I mean, if someone comes in in six months, they're just going to, they're going to use the, the default thresholds that are in place.
Right.
Right. So it's, I mean, there's, it's not that we don't have a standard. This is not as locally defined as, as we would like. So I, I don't, I mean, eight versus 12 months.
I mean, I, I could live with that. I'd rather keep the threshold and, and add a little bit more time to the process, but Jude, what do you think? I mean, I know it's late and I'm sorry to be doing this sort of on the fly.
Yeah, I mean, I already said I'm uncomfortable with how, how we're doing this on the fly. And, uh, I mean, this is a great example of, we're not sure tonight about the, the difference. So, I mean, you heard what I said. I, I think I was trying to give ways to the planning commission guidance and destiny and what the right timeline is. I, I honestly don't know. So we take a gamble if you extend it out, but maybe that's the right gamble. We're not going to have it tomorrow, right? Um, and I'm not trying to be impractical, so.
Okay, well, you want, you wanted 12 months with, if you want to keep this, this language, let's say 12 months.
I, I would do eight to 12. I mean.
We can work toward it. Does that, does that, does 12 months more plausible in terms of establishing thresholds?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, we'll have to do a whole RFP, find a consultant, write a contract, go to council, get it approved. I'll have to come up with the whole scope of who's going to do the work, um, and then start it and then take it through a public process. So pretty, pretty intense, but I guess possible. It's just a matter of, you know, when we look at all these things together, I'm going to have to hear from the council what order you want the team to do this.
And something else is not going to get done before this is.
Agreed. It's, it's likely that we're going to have to amend the general. Persemer creation, public services, and aesthetic, um, thresholds currently living in the general.
So it's not going to happen even in 12 months if we're amendment the general.
Well, that assumes that they're going to be different. I mean, they might not be different. They might just say that these are the right thresholds. I mean, for the ones we already have, I mean, I think, again, I'm not an attorney, so, you know, I'm just skating on the edge of this whole sequel, you know, business. But the goal here was when we have a project that requires sequel, that we have a set of thresholds. And if there's some in the general plan already, and they seem like the right one for multifamily, then we just take them and we're done. Like, I don't think, you know, like, those are going to be the easy ones because the, the citizenry already generally agrees with the general plan. So if they feel like they apply to multifamily, then check, move on. It's really just going to be the ones where we go, because this is multifamily and we've never had this before, that we need to do some new considering, so to speak. So, so I'm kind of okay with stuff that's in the general plan. And, I mean, you're right, maybe we do, but, but maybe we don't. It may be, it just lines up nicely.
But this is, I mean, I mean, so currently we have established sequel thresholds, just the state's default sequel threshold. Is that right? And that lives in our ordinances, not in our general plan? Or does it, is it in the general plan or is it?
Uh, we draw from the general plan when we do sequel analysis.
To establish what the threshold.
But we don't have formally adopted threshold of significance. So we're drawing from best practice or other regulatory agencies.
I guess I just worry that it does seem like a lot of work to be, to build on top of everything else that we've been writing.
I think what's been hard about this one, I'll just say as a layperson, is there's been conflicting information with what's involved with this. That's what's been very hard for me, um, as a decision maker. This makes it hard. I, this is not my area of expertise. I've never done it before and I don't know what's involved. But I don't, I'm not going to know what's involved in a week either, frankly. More time is not going to improve anything from, uh, this one. So, I mean, if it's preventing us from moving forward, this is something I'm willing to give on. And I, I guess all I can do is hope that those that are, you know, as we go through the process, that, you know, we try to do it as efficiently as possible. I mean, we have so much to do. I mean, I know that we would, but, you know, the only other alternative is to say thresholds were reasonably feasible, um, you know, it being the intent to borrow from other jurisdictions. I mean, but that's already in there.
Several sequel thresholds were feasible and warranted? I mean, if we discovered.
Well, I, I think feasible because if we say that we're reasonably feasible, you know, if we're doing something that's that orthogonal to what people out there do, we're going to get ourselves into a theoretical place that I don't think we want to be. And we don't want to ask Florida to be, but if these are like ordinary course things that you choose A or B, um, well, I mean, I want to try and put, the concept is try and push the, the threshold, but not kill ourselves because we've got a lot of other things to do as well. So, so if that's the case, is there wording that, that's different from saying thresholds, if I'm hearing you correctly? You want to try for thresholds, but is there an alternative?
I mean, I think.
I mean, I, I, I would just keep the threshold and figure out if we're going through the process, but it's not a smart timeline or the scope has to be adjusted.
Couldn't we reopen this at that time? Um, and through the mayor, there's already a commitment to revisit, um, some of these pieces. And so since this one goes in the MMRP, it is a little bit more sensitive, um, since we already have a chance to revisit the other ones. And so personally, the feasibility language that council member Haskell was just mentioning, to me, gives me some comfort. Because then if the, if we provide you preliminary information and you change your mind, you're like, you know what? That's really not feasible. Or we're going to do some of these and not others. You know what I mean? Then you have that, um, you haven't set a community expectation that we can't meet.
So say you're, so, so establish local thresholds as, as if these.
We're reasonably.
We're reasonably feasible per CCR section. Is that, Craig, is that a fair view? Okay, so. No, no, it's, yeah, so it's, so just giving, giving the words.
Reasonably feasible.
You get the idea? Yeah, I can, I can picture that, so.
Yeah, no, exact, well, no, you know what, you know, it's, it's worse than that. What we're, what you're relying on. No, no, well, spelling is a problem, but it's worse than that. It's Zoom. So it's, everything's delayed. So like, I'm seeing those letters show up after the fact. So I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, so I think we got everything.
So I, you okay with it?
And I was fine with all the other ones.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will supply those.
So the motion would be to adopt the, um, resolution, um, adopting the ISM and D and MMRP with the changes to the resolution and to the addendum to the MMRP as discussed by the council.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion for a second.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Wernikov. Further discussion?
May have lost me, but I, I, I get it. I, I, I think, are you happy with it? Um, no, I've said I'm going to abstain. So am I. That's going to be two of us. Well, and, and just for the record, for discussion purposes, it's primarily because I feel like we're doing something too important on the fly, given the security memo. And, and we are trying as much as possible to lean into getting this done and avoiding bad consequences. And that I'm sympathetic to. I also am very sympathetic to the fire marshal's request to commit to these things. What I'm particularly uncomfortable with is kind of making it up as we go. Um, I'm very aware that there can be unintended consequences of doing that. And, you know, for Sarah's, you know, raised something that's also occurring to me, which is some of this, I, I don't know the significance legally of the resolution versus having it as a guidance in the MMRP versus having it in the post AT plan. So for me, I can't get my bearings enough to be supporting this at this point. Um, so that's just for the record.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we have a motion on the floor. We'll hold it, please.
All right, council member Haskell. Abstain. Council member Haskell. Council member Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff?
Aye.
Mayor Alff?
Aye.
Motion passes. It brings us to the housing element. The resolution on the housing.
Well, we haven't really even discussed the housing element.
Right, so it's, yeah, discuss, discussion. Yeah. Or not, but, I mean, but we need to get through this agenda item. Okay.
Well, I, I guess I wanted to start with some discussion. So I, I mean, we, we talked a little, a long time ago, um, about potentially substituting SB nine, um, units, um, for the opt-in units or potentially Dorothy Ford Park and Open Space. So it sounds like the SB nine units, in theory, I mean, I understand that Dorothy Ford Park represents 50, so SB nine's unlikely to be, but if it, it could contribute to that potential already with the sunrise, basically.
Sub juniors. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll just, yeah, got it. Yeah.
Yep, no problem. So my understanding is if we got SB nine units and we got some other stuff, that potentially that could all roll up and support Dorothy Ford Park and Open Space. So I just want to check that that's true in your mind.
In my mind, only if there was another site that was identified that could accommodate those lower income units.
Um, okay, but it doesn't have to be another site. It just needs to be some combination, like if there's SB nine units that are basically, you know, low income in some way that, um, HCD would look at and say, these are okay, and we got some other stuff. I mean, then in theory, that stuff could all go against Dorothy Ford Park and Open Space.
Are you saying to reduce, um, the scale of the project or to not develop it at all?
Um, it could be reduced, could be if that plus some other stuff was enough to add up to 50. I'm just saying that these, this is one of the things that could add into a solution for Dorothy Ford Park.
I think it would be hard to make a case that SB nine units would be lower income.
And is that any more difficult than ADUs or JADUs?
Um, I think it would be similarly difficult, which is, it's difficult.
Okay, right.
We're going to have to substantiate it throughout the housing element cycle.
Sure, but they're, they're in the same category of that, you know, if we could substantiate them, then they would work. But for the opt-in, we don't have any way of having these basically subtract from the opt-in, right? Unless we do something specific for that.
I'm sorry, I, subtract from the opt-in?
So opt-in, we have 12. So let's say we said, oh, we have an SB nine unit and we'd like to take the opt-in down to 11.
Yeah, so that's the question from earlier tonight.
Exactly.
Okay, so I, I think that's possible.
And so.
I think that's possible. I think we would have to write the opt-in program that way. So we'd have to look at, like, adjust the timing maybe, and then write in some language that says, you know, um, if SB nine projects are received and permitted, then we would reduce the number of opt-in units in that program. So if like two SB nine units come in this year, um, then we would, um, adjust the opt-in from 12 down to 10.
Yeah, maybe at council discretion or something.
Well, it's a program, we're writing that program.
Yeah.
The program could reflect that. Okay, thought, yeah, just so we tune it, because I think we're going to want to decide where we put potential. Part of the reason I'm asking is, it was, I was really interested in your idea of what Atherton had done with SB nine inducements. And, and the idea that, you know, if, if that's what we decided in the next year or so to say, yeah, we're, we're going to do, we give people free basements or whatever, that maybe we, we would get more SB nines. And then we get to the question of, you know, for the, for the opt-in, I think that they, they can be a pretty much one-to-one swap. For the low income, we'd have to go through this thing of convincing HCD that they were truly low income.
In order to do inducements for SB nine, we'd have to reopen the SB nine ordinance and rewrite that.
Okay, but I mean, in the next two years, we could do that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm not, again, I'm, I'm more trying to say, I've heard from residents some creative ideas. And part of the whole point of sunrise was to say, everybody's sort of woken up to what's going on. And now with the sunrise, we're saying, we got two years to come up with creative ideas. And this might be one of those. And yeah, I, I get it. I mean, we have to open something up, but we still, it's, we're not precluded from it. That's really what I'm looking for.
I guess I'm not understanding the connection to the sunrise, though. It would reduce the opt-in.
So I, I can easily see how we could reduce the opt-in. And again, being creative here and imagining a future where we went to HCD and said, we have SB nine units that are deed restricted or something. And they said, okay, well, then those can count as low income. And then we could, if we found some other low income, we could potentially reduce the size of Dorothy Ford Park or something else. I just want to make sure we have in the next two years as much flexibility as possible as we go through this. So I'm really just trying to make sure that we're not locked into anything specific.
The things you're saying are definitely, they're theoretically possible.
Yeah.
Because of the way affordable housing is financed, I think that some of those things are unlikely, but theoretically possible.
Yeah, and, and I'm just looking at the theoretical possibilities right now. I appreciate your practical viewpoint. So, okay. So I, I mean, I would like to see some kind of program that basically gives us that, that option. Because I think the two things that we've heard pretty loud and clear tonight were concerns about Dorothy Ford Park. And we've got the sunrise as, in my mind, our best bet of trying to avoid that area. And if we could do something toward the opt-in, which this feels to me like maybe something that could help reduce some of the pain, so to speak, of the opt-in, that I, I feel like at least that's a way for us to, to get at these two pain points.
I definitely, can I, oh, sorry, go ahead, go ahead. I guess my question is, Laura. What would need to be written in? I'm on board with the approach. What would need to be written in? That would have to happen tonight. That would have to be written in. We'd have to write a program. Don't just, I guess my question is, couldn't we just, if an SB nine comes in, we, we will, we won't need to do as many opt-ins? So why do we have to write that up? I guess is my question.
I would just add language to set an expectation. And so I would add language into the description, like a sentence, into the description of the opt-in. And then probably in the program.
I mean, generally speaking.
To implement it.
Inventory in a different place, we can, it makes up for it along the way. So we're not, you know, what's on the inventory, on the site's inventory? If we end up getting quantity elsewhere, it takes away from the overall, what we have to do on the site's inventory.
Except we have this program for doing opt-in where we go out and we ask people for them. So if we don't start shrinking that number explicitly, not just that HCD doesn't get on our case because we're not meeting our numbers, it feels to me like people could still say, well, you haven't filled up your 12, so you need to let us do so. So I think we actually have to do something about it. But I'd be pretty, I mean, personally, and again, it's late. So, I mean, I would be comfortable if the rest of the councils come with Laura adding appropriate sentences. Because I think this is pretty small.
You said two things, so SB nine units would, would simply lower our cap on, from 12 to some other.
Right.
And then you were also talking about SB nine units replacing, you know, go at, say, Chapel Park.
Yeah, and if we did that, that's clearly something in this two-year period.
Well, that's, I've assumed all along that was part of the process. ADU numbers, SB nine numbers, is there a chance to revisit it?
Exactly, and I was just trying to understand theoretically if that would be possible. And I've been told it is, although it sounds practically unlikely. But, but that's part of what the two years is about, to, to really understand that. So, so I'm not looking for us to solve the Dorothy Ford Park problem tonight.
Just talking about the SB nine.
The SB nine opt-in, I think as long as we agree that there's, the program has enough flexibility for that, I, I think I'd be okay with that.
Well, are we, are you going to be taking site by site and talking about that? Because I like that concept and I agree with it. I think it's smart to look at SB nine and see what we can do with it. And we don't have to do this in writing tonight, but actually looking at that ordinance and seeing if there's some incentives would be worthwhile, I think. But not for tonight. But one of the items that I'm really struggling with is the Glen Oaks. I don't think it belongs in this. And so I don't want to necessarily link SB nine only to opt-in. I think we need some flexibility to see in Dorothy Ford Field. I mean, we don't know where it's going to go. And I just want to ask if you're thinking it goes to those two and more.
Well, I would be happy broadening it. My only issue with Glen Oaks is I understand it is it's private property. And if we zone that private property for a particular number of dwelling units, that, that becomes a right of that private property. And so, so then we, I mean, I don't see how we can then go back and say, oh.
That's a fair point.
Know what I mean? Because I'm all on board. I mean, if we could figure out something creative for Glen Oaks, I'm there with you. I just, given it's private property, I haven't quite figured out how to crack that nut. So if, if you get an idea here, I'm, I'm, I'm open to that.
Personally, they're above moderate and moderate. And that's the one program that goes against the principles the ad hoc committee actually tried to follow, which was preserving local businesses. And then they did something that's 100% orthogonal to that. So from my perspective, I can't support a housing element that includes Glen Oaks as a site. And what I'm trying to do is figure out where else we can build in expectations. And it's hard. I'm not, I'm not unrealistic about that. But for me, you're taking a vibrant equestrian business, consistent with the town ethos, away. They employ a lot of people. They provide great enjoyment to a lot of local people. And they have a vibrant business that's been going on for quite some time. And we know that that business is not going to continue if it's rezoned for housing. So I can't support that. But looking at SB nine enhancements going forward, I think we could probably press the limit on ADUs and JADUs, given if we have an enhancement program for that, would be what I would be looking to explore. I don't like the opt-in for all the reasons I've said in the past, but for the record tonight, the opt-in is really not consistent with a considered planning approach. I like the creativity that went into it. I really appreciate the ad hoc committee's thoughts around it. But for the reasons I think that we have aligned, it's a difficult, a difficult thing to see. So, you know, if we need to agree to that, I like the idea of reducing if I have SB nine units, incentivizing those and also looking at, I'd want to look at the parameters of opt-in as well. Because I think there might be a benefit to one more meeting that's both ASCC meeting and a planning commission meeting to get oriented. And then they each have their own one meeting. That would help me get more comfortable with that. But I, those are the areas of pressure point for me. I do nevertheless agree with the SB nine as something to keep in mind for the way people would feel and the opt-in program. I think it makes more sense there. So that's where I'm coming from, but we can get to those in a minute.
I, I, I do have a process question. Are we going to go through each site as we go through this? Or, you know, what, what's the, what's the expectation of the group? We've got a little bit of everything so far, and I just want to kind of make sure what's their, their point.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I was, you know, I was prepared to just hear people's specific comments and high-level.
I mean, I think we have to be careful by going through each site because if we do that, you guys are going to have to, you're going to have to recuse yourselves again. So just, yes. Yeah, no, that's, that's fine, just saying, as long as we would, just keep that in mind, yeah.
I guess what I was looking for is sort of, are there changes people would want to make?
So on the opt-in, just to make sure we're making progress here, we do have that one sentence that we, Laura's going to come up with and everybody's comfortable with that. Okay. What should we move on to now? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, in terms of the site's inventory, with the, with that change to the opt-in, I am comfortable with it. Particularly, and I can expand upon my comments, but particularly given the super robust post-provable process that we're going to have over a two-year period. And, you know, we voted five to zero on that in last week's meeting. I think the sunrise period is going to give the community, like I just said, two more years to continue to work on these challenges. And I do think throughout that, we're going to iterate and continually improve. We even talked about that throughout the housing element. We knew that as, as different properties were coming and going, that things were going to evolve and change. And so, you know, yes, I am comfortable with the site's inventory based on all of that.
I mean, I'll just say, having, you know, having participated in those sites inventory discussions now coming up on a year ago, yeah, no one's happy about everything that was on there. And that was honestly, it was kind of the goal. It was a compromise. You know, a lot of discussion went into every site that was ultimately picked. The inventory that we looked at in February was very different from what was ultimately sort of agreed upon starting in April, largely because of public comment. I, I, you know, I, so, again, there's, you know, a lot of people are, are not satisfied with this. I mean, it's, it's not something anyone contemplated or wanted to be doing, but it is, you know, I just, I can say that we've, we've thoroughly discussed this in front of, in full view of the public and come to a set of sites that, that have their problems, but any site we replace them with is going to have a problem. So I, I agree. It is, I do believe it is the best compromise we could come up with.
So you're not willing to consider reconsider the Glen Oaks sites, even though it goes against the principles cited by the very ad hoc committee to avoid building at the Nat Horse Triangle after you discussed with those businesses, oh, no, we don't want to interrupt you. Even that.
Yes, I mean, honestly, yeah, we had the compromise. And I, I mean, that was, that was something the committee. And, and no, I'm not crazy about it, but it was, it was worth it.
It's above moderate and moderate. It's a permanent chain. And it's inconsistent with the town values of the rural community that values equestrian facility. And there's an equestrian facility right across the street that is going to be shut down with a Stanford wedge. That's two properties in town. If you go to Robert's on a Saturday or Sunday morning, you see everybody dressed in the equestrian clothing. And I, I, it's not going to be lost on me that this is going to have a negative impact on a lot of businesses and a lot of the very workers who need the affordable housing. So I, I'm surprised. I hear you about this has been a long process. This is not to diminish the efforts that have been made before. You know, the state housing mandates are not sized for a community like ours that is rural in nature and has a lot of safety challenges. And we're doing the best we can. And I think there's a lot of good going in town to create new housing options. You know, I think if we, and I agree with you, there's no, no one outcome that's going to satisfy everybody. But I do think it's important to be at least intellectually honest. If you said no interference with businesses, and my recollection is people didn't understand that that was a vibrant business. And only after it was already put on and agreed, did people start to understand that. It just seemed very unfair and very short-sighted to do that as part of all of this, when it's only going to produce moderate and above moderate housing that could reasonably well be covered with ADUs and JADUs, given the robust process that we have there. So, but all of the other elements in here, I don't like Dorothy Ford Field, but I think that sunrise is an important and creative step. And I, I hear every single member committed to trying to hit the ground running as we move forward. And all of that gives me great comfort. And I think we are all aligned on where the pressure points are and the, the things that are most painful are. I do disagree with this one site being selected. And I know that we're going to try to, you know, hear the public's input. I do think it's part of all of this. I would like to talk about the SB nine. I would like to make that proposal when it's appropriate to get into the meetings and maybe adjusting how that works mechanically. I also would want the, the full two-year sunrise, the extra few months. I think those are important points. And I do think we need to have some meetings in town at a minimum to educate how, what is our strategy to work with other jurisdictions to educate the state about we communities. It's starting, we need to be engaged. We need not to be on the sidelines, at least about the education part, potentially on the challenge part. But, you know, that, that's a whole host of things. But let's get educated and let people hear what's going on and make sure we're on the cutting edge of that. I mean, there's some interesting developments. Maybe they're not important and relevant at the end of the day, but maybe they are. And they could really be helpful to us making the case. Because the reason we're all struggling here is because this is really not easy and it really doesn't fit us. We're, we're really not a community where scale and cost makes sense in the way it does elsewhere. And we are leaning in. So it's really pressuring all of us in our own ways. And I just need people to commit to try and do more outreach. If we're going to be adopting something that's quite like the current sites, I want to make sure that we're, you know, sending those messages that we, we're going to try and keep abreast of key developments that might, might help us press back. So I'll stop there.
Well, I just wanted to say, Judith, it came up early, much early, that we could include Glen Oaks in the sunrise.
Private property, the minute you rezone it, it's the property owner's right to take advantage of that.
That was the question I was going to ask is, Laura, how, what's our deadline on zone? It's a year?
The issue, though, is under the state housing laws, once it's in the housing element. That has the same effect. They would just be subject to the zoning or the housing element. I'm looking to Cara, that's correct, right?
Yeah, that's correct. And, and it would, there would be no development standards. So we just have the density. There would be, if, if you just, if you just included the density on the housing element, then the, the owner of that property could still develop up to that density. But if you don't adopt the zoning, then there would be no development standards for those projects.
Well, so I'm, I just want to add, so I'm, I'm on board with some kind of lobbying. I was wondering if we should put it, the post-housing adoption plan. Yet with this other, the lobbying with other rural communities potentially, right?
Yeah.
That, that seemed like a logical place to me to put that. I had that on my list. I'm also on board with the two full years. Yeah, I'm, I'm struggling with Glen Oaks because I'm with you. I mean, it's, it's clearly a vibrant business. And. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Low to community.
I do, so.
And have I gotten anywhere with the idea of claiming the Alpine Junior Quarter name? Not really.
Well, I was gonna say, let's stay on Glen Oaks. I mean, is, I mean, is there truly, is there anything we can do here? I mean, I get it's private property. I get we're, we're sort of.
And, and we get that they've already done, they've already submitted a, a, a low-income housing thing and, and was rejected by Stanford, by the owner.
The owner didn't want to do further development there.
Yeah. And, and this is, I mean, it's apples and oranges, right? He, he, you know, the owner had an idea. Stanford, that wasn't their idea. So, but with this new zoning, Stanford could say, well, we want more faculty housing, and then they would just close down. Now, my understanding is they'd close down potentially the front, right? They're still the back of Glen Oaks.
My understanding is that the developable site is such that you would not be able to have an equestrian facility in conjunction with any housing. I think Laura, Laura, I think you confirmed that last time I asked that question.
That's the best information we have available.
So Laura, when we went through this in the Ad Hoc Housing Element Committee, you were in discussions with the property owner there. You were in discussions with Stanford, and you shared some background about those discussions. Is there anything from that that you could share right now that would help with this discussion?
I don't know that anything.
Back to July, when we were discussing this.
I don't know if anything would help this discussion. Councilmember Haskell was just asking for that clarification. And we, in, in July, the former mayor and I met with the different representatives. We were trying to see if there was a way that the equestrian facility and housing could fit on the site. And it seemed, based on those conversations and what we understood from the different parties, it seemed unlikely that that could happen. So we just tried to write these materials in a way that the town didn't get in the way of it, but it became a private property issue between those parties. But we did not see a solution at that time.
Did Stanford share with you their intent at all at that time of what their vision for that property was? I mean, my understanding is they're, they're quite happy with the current tenants and how it's currently operating.
We didn't speak at that level of detail in terms of the operation. Stanford, because of the way that this property's been used and how it's been designated in our own general plan and zoning, they did not intend to develop the site. It was a, you know, initiated by the town through the Ad Hoc Housing Element Committee. And they said, if this is initiated by the town, then we would be open to having those conversations with the town about appropriately developing the site.
And just help me get the number. I mean, just, I mean, it's crazy. We're doing creative stuff on the fly at midnight, but so, how many units do we, did we assign to Glen Oaks? Was it sixteen? Was it twelve?
It's, it's sixteen units.
Sixteen, yeah, okay. So that's the thought, so.
Did I take the buffer down too significantly there to? On that particular, now, am I remembering that wrong? I know we did in overall, but I thought it was generated from that.
No, not really, not in that way. We investigated it, but realized that that wasn't gonna help us.
So, I mean, and then the, the next question I was gonna ask is, the owner originally had a plan to build some employee housing. And that was gonna be for eight or ten, something like that. Do you remember? Seven?
I was on a planning committee.
Okay. So I'm gonna call it seven.
Well, we approved it. Stanford wasn't interested.
Right, well, I guess, and again, I'm just trying to be creative here because I'm, I'm sort of at a loss for other ideas. I was just trying to figure out if, if we get approached Stanford and they were willing to say, you know, we're willing to take seven or eight employee houses for twenty years, or some, some limited amount of time, like not forever, but some limited amount of time. And if the owner, the current owner were willing to build with that limit, that would leave us sort of trying to find eight additional dwelling units. I, I'm just trying to see, is there, if there's anything.
I don't, I think the configuration of what the owner or the lesee was trying to do was very minimalist and streamlined, and I don't think it would be consistent with Stanford's typical standard. They, they would have a more robust, and, and therefore it would be bigger. And I don't think even the seven, done the Stanford way, would likely leave enough room.
Yeah, I was thinking about something different, which is.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, I mean, you sort of got the right idea, but I was thinking more if the lesee were like, I'm gonna build these seven, and I've got a commitment from Stanford that they're gonna be here for twenty years. And after that, Stanford might just rip it down and, and then build whatever they wanted. I, I mean, again, I, I don't know if any of this makes sense, and obviously I'm not Stanford and I'm not the lesee, but, but I was just trying to figure out because I don't see how we're gonna fill in sixteen. I can imagine how we might fill in eight. You know, like maybe we find a way to fill it. You know what I mean? I'm just, I just struggle at sixteen. It seems like I don't know where to go.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the only thing I can add is that Stanford has a big problem with affordable housing. Among, in particular about it in its agricultural workers. Red Barn, for example, has nowhere, they, there's no place that they can, they can live. And Stanford, we can put pressure on to make them do a big affordable housing complex there for their. I mean, this is, I guess, speaking of why I don't trust this ISMD, I mean, this is an agricultural. This is an agricultural business with a lot of agricultural workers that need housing.
We're talking housing, all right, yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not ISMD, just.
Yeah.
We moved on.
Hopeless.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you on that part.
The, but at any rate, I would say if we want to be creative with Stanford, we could, it makes sense to try and approach them about, because everybody is thinking, why the hell is not, isn't Stanford doing more really truly affordable housing? So, I mean, they have a lot of workers over there.
So Laura, do you have any sense, and, and then again, I'm, I'm making it up on the fly, of what HCD would accept? Like, I mean, what if Stanford were willing to commit to, you know, I'll just pick it up, ten years, which is longer than this renewal cycle, for putting in eight units? I mean, do you think HCD would accept that? If, and then I don't know whether the lesee would want to build them or not, but, but just, I'm just trying to pressure test a little bit. Is there some way that we could work with Stanford where they say, look, we think, we, we have no need to take this business right away. We're not gonna permanently commit, because Stanford will never permanently commit to any use of their land. But we're not gonna permanently commit this housing, but we would commit to it for a fixed period of time. And then we could renew the lease or not. I mean, you know, they, they can do that part of the business. But you see what I'm after is like, can we find something that we could go to HCD with that, that would sort of pass muster? That's.
I don't think it's an HCD issue. I think it's a practicality issue. If the housing units get built, they count for HCD. So in this case, I don't think that we would have to get into that with them.
I would be, I'd be willing to push pretty hard on making that a, at least making it affordable housing. Because then you could potentially still have the, but having rich people, you know, that's ridiculous to try and put houses in the more rich people. For you to mean. So I don't, I don't get it. I, I never did understand how on earth we came up with that solution. I guess it was what Stanford wanted.
The other question is how aggressive the town council would be willing to be about reducing numbers. Because if you think you can't get more than eight, maybe, maybe the answer is ten ADUs, because it would be above moderate. And then you just, you know, shave a little bit on the percentage. I mean, I don't think it's not doable, and it's in the range. And it's moderate to above moderate income. So I think it's not shaving where I think the focus really policy-wise should be. So that, that is an alternative. Just put everything on the table.
You're saying increasing the ADUs in the above moderate range?
Yep.
I think what happened, the problem with that is this really frustrating thirty, 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 ten ratio that we have to eat and create. And as soon as we break that, we've got to bring up all the other lower categories. This is the problem we have over and over again. So we'd have to increase our ADUs significantly, and then HCD wouldn't accept that, right?
Yeah, HCD is much more critical of the lower income categories for ADU. But I think we would have trouble justifying more ADUs, period. Because we had to convince them somewhat strongly in the meeting we had with them to try to take the number that we've got.
This came up with the.
But I think in addition to that, the point I want to make is if we increase the, Laura, correct me if I'm wrong. If we increase the ADU within the above moderate, it breaks that formula, which there was a phrase for, which I won't remember, but it was basically the distribution across the four income levels, thirty percent, thirty percent, thirty percent, ten percent. If we increase one, it has a cascading effect on increasing the total number, because we have to hold those ratios.
But, but we're just substituting moderate for moderate. No, 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 but it's moderate ADUs versus moderate over at Glen Oaks. I, I, I'm, I'm missing your, I mean, I get the thirty, thirty, ten, but in this case, it's just moderate, moderate. If, if Glen Oaks was low income, we'd be in trouble, because then it would be ADUs being substituted, you know.
Well, Laura, you.
Okay.
I'm not the expert, sorry, I can explain it, but.
Okay, so we, we definitely talked a lot about the ratio and the proportion. And those conversations were mostly about how do we achieve the lower income units? And I think that if we don't use the ratio, then we have to have a justification for something else. So that's important. Creating a justification for the lower income units, we discussed was basically insurmountable. We didn't, just didn't have any data to back that up. I don't know what the, you know, what our explanation or rationale would be for increasing ADUs beyond what we already have in the housing element. Period. And then we would have to do, deal with how are we, what's our rationale for how they're allocated?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm missing the ratio. Okay, so, I, I mean, we have this sort of conundrum on Glen Oaks. And the alternative is we push this forward, and then Stanford says, well, we're not that interested in building for the next twenty years anyway. And it doesn't matter, but we don't, I mean, we have no way of knowing.
And the HCD comments were before.
Well, we had the buffer to deal with that.
My understanding is that's the situation, and we have the buffer.
But the, the HCD comments were before the ADU task force, right?
Correct.
So we have some rationale, whether it's acceptable or not, to, to say there's a healthy amount of interest and we want to incentivize, it would be a proposal, create some incentives for day ADU, because I do think that's an under, underutilized feature. So just a lot of pressure. We've done more. There is fewer jurisdictions in compliance. You know, we have a rationale. So to me, it would be viable, and maybe it would work, or maybe it wouldn't at the end of the day. But it's logical, and there is a logical basis for supporting that, in my view. But others need to.
The only thing that I would add is that I think HCD is going to be skeptical of a local survey. We know of at least one other community that did a survey on purpose to try to justify the numbers. And HCD was in their public meeting and heard them talking and conspiring about it. And so they're going to question it, I believe. I mean, it doesn't mean it won't eventually pass muster, but I think it would be a risk.
Yeah, fair, fair enough. And for the record, we're not trying to do anything other than leverage good work. I mean, that I believe was really good work done by a lot of citizens in town, and probably in a pretty thorough way. I mean, I wasn't involved, but my observation was that it was a very good.
Do you think we could get any meaningful discussion going with Stanford and the lesee in the next two weeks? I mean, because the problem is, I mean, we can't run this thing forever. And we clearly don't have enough. Well, I, I'm just trying to like, I'm just trying to figure out, like, if, could we do something where the lesee says, sure, I'll build seven or eight? I mean, maybe even low income. It might even help us with this low income. If Stanford commits to letting me have the housing for twenty years, because I don't want to put the capital in and then have it gone two years later. You know, I mean, I, and again, I'm, I'm making this up. I have no idea what either party would be interested in. But I, the, but the bigger question here is, do we think that we could get any meaningful information in two weeks? Because my concern is, over the next three months, maybe we could, but I don't think we have three months to let this thing drag on.
Right.
So what do you guys think? I mean, is, is, is there any there there?
I mean, based, I feel like that's what they tried to do back in, you know, what was that, June? I believe it was June of last year. I mean, when they met with both of, both Stanford and the property owner. And they had these discussions. I mean, that's exactly what they tried to do. I'm sorry, the lesee. Oh, sorry. And I guess my concern from a timeline standpoint is, well, I'll leave it at that. Laura's not even here in two weeks, so.
Yeah, but we're gonna, we're gonna have this all buttoned down. So Laura, Laura'd be like, oh, this is so awesome. I don't have to be pretty.
Neither am I, but.
Yeah, anyway, I'm just, I'm trying to be creative on this.
No, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. And that, that's why. I was not in the room, but that's why we spent like three hours on it that night, working very hard to try and whittle it down. And there were reasons for that, and this was the best way to do.
So, I mean, but who talked to Stanford?
Craig Hughes and myself.
Who did you talk to?
The, um, I met with Stanford on a lot of different topics over the past year. I honestly don't remember. I don't remember what group of people it was. It's all, the, the folks that we work with are their development folks and their property management folks are the ones that we normally work with.
I think it was like Suetas.
Yeah, and, and it could have been government relations and. Yeah, so it could have been Gene, but like I said, I've met with a lot of those folks on a lot of topics. I don't, I just don't have those notes or anything in front of me.
Yeah, I'd be willing to try, but.
I would too. I guess I'm trying to figure out, do we know any big donors to Stanford that we could go talk to? That, that would be the right place to start this conversation.
And, and Craig, tell me again the picture, like what the, the hope of that commerce outcome would be?
So again, this is just brainstorming. So it's just some, something on the order of if, if Stanford was willing to let the lesee build some number of units, potentially low income units would be even better, I think, for us. That makes it a more positive thing for HCD. Then whatever that delta is, we've got to find somewhere else. And, and maybe we find it because we go to HCD and say, look, we've, we've added to our low-income housing, so we've made that more secure. But we've basically, at the same time, added eight more to the ADU. But we've basically at the same time added eight more to the ADUs, which we know you don't like. But maybe they'd be willing to look at these two things as a good faith effort. So that, that, that's sort of roughly what I'm, I mean, but again, soup, super rough, but without talking to Stanford, because they might go eh. And without talking to Leesee who might go eh.
Yeah.
Then I don't, you know, I don't know how much.
I agree. It's just an idea. I will say my recollection of those conversations was that the Leesee had told Stanford. If, if there were to be development, the Leesee would be only interested in low income housing for its staff. And I think Stanford said at this time they were not interested in doing that.
And they were not interested in providing housing for their own low income people.
I mean, I think the only, the difference I'm adding here is.
Why not split it up? I mean, the, the Stanford could do half.
Cause I think that's probably not going to be the, the same kind of housing that Stanford would want to build. I mean, I was more after the idea that Stanford makes a commitment to say, you build it, we'll leave you alone for a certain amount of time. And after that, you might bring the bulldozers in and just flatten it. Because this isn't housing we want, but if you're willing to put it in and house your guys there, we're willing to give you a pass for a certain amount of time. And that, that was my thinking that, and again, I, I don't know the conversation that you guys had with Stanford, but it's not. Here's permanent housing that Stanford stuck with. I mean, maybe it's even the Leesee agrees to build it and at Stanford request after X number of years to remove it. Be responsible for the demo. I mean, a, again, without being able to talk to some people, it's just hard to see.
Secondhand, so I don't, I, my understanding is there were, again, it's only secondhand, so I think it should be firsthand. But there were issues in the past with wanting development at that site between the Leesee and the owner. So I'd, I'd, I would expect that they would continue to think that is true now. So I don't, we might be postponing for something and end up very, very, very well right back exactly where we are right now.
Dare, dare I suggest that Judith have another job?
Well, I, I, I think at this point, I mean, if. Man, I know this is frustrating. I know we'd like to move on. I'd also say it's almost one o'clock. So I'm not sure we're going to get through the housing element tonight regardless, um, to be honest. So I wouldn't mind putting this off for two weeks and with the other councils, councils members. Person like, let's, let's try to start this conversation to just even see if there's a hint of something here. Cause I think Glen Oaks is pretty important. I mean, we've got, A, we've gotten a lot of comments on it. And B, I think Judith makes some pretty good points that this process that we went through, we sort of weirdly put. Projects on the table one at a time and then gave people a chance to object to them. Like Nathorres got on there early and then they said, oh, we're going to sue and it got taken off rather than saying, here's everything. So it, it.
I, we definitely looked at it all together and they were kind of up and down and up and down and moving around.
I, I. Well, it feels, it felt, and again, you know, you guys were deeply involved with it. So I want to be careful here that I'm not. It, it felt like the Nathorres stuff came up early as, oh, this is the obvious place. And the Nathorres neighbors justifiably freaked out rather than saying, look, here are all our options for this. And this is our total number and we got to pick the least worst options. It didn't feel to me like that was the process that Nate Nathorres got taken off the list early. And for, you know, not unreasonable reasons, but it's a business and that kind of stuff. But then to Judith's point, it's like, we're now saying to this other business, well, you know, you didn't get, you know, you didn't get on the. The, in front of the line fast enough to basically get taken off or you didn't threaten to sue the town. I, I don't know which. Okay. Okay. Yeah. I mean, you were, then that's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't want to, yeah, I believe you. Yeah. And I guess the question is, are we willing to spend two more weeks to see if there's something to turn on this important stone?
I just think it would be, so I think it would be a lot more than, I think it would be more than two weeks. We have to take into consideration that our planning director is leaving on vacation. Um, I don't know who else is going to do this. Work from a staff standpoint. Um, I also am not available at that week. Have had some in scheduled, so I just want to be clear on availability affecting things. My understanding also, well, Laura, I'll let you speak for yourself. In terms of your availability to work on a packet is my understanding, not until early May.
Yeah, I could start working on another packet the last week of April, um, for a May meeting. So we'd be looking at probably May tenth.
So it feels like a policy question. I mean, do we basically delay for another month? We passed the ISM and D, so we, you know, we, we've got something off the table. I'm okay with that. And we take the risk during that month that we get builder remedy. I mean, cause that's the main thing. I mean, there's, there's other, your other technical issue, but I'm willing to accept that one. And so the, to me, the big risk is we get a builder remedy application, which I, I think we all think is reasonably low. So I, I just, I don't know. This feels pretty important to the, the sort of, you know. The general sort of ethos of the town that, I mean, we believe in the horse culture. Stanford, the wedge is already basically taken out one. So. It's, I mean, it's tough, right? I mean, this is, this is a tough thing to do, but we're kind of down to that point of trying to figure this out.
And I agree with everything you just said, which is, we had those discussions about how, you know, Stanford, we're already losing the horse culture on the one side. And we had discussion about it being a small business. Um, the problem was we were looking at all the available sites at the time and there was nowhere else to go. And so we tried to minimize the, the number of units at that location. You know? Period. I mean, that's what we tried to do. Um, and I don't know how likely it is it'll even get developed. And so I guess my concern is let's play it forward. If we meet on, let's say between now and the last week of April, when Laura gets back. There's meetings with the owner, there's meetings with Stanford. Let's say they don't have any alternatives. What are we going to do then? And I'm concerned that we come back and then we need another meeting and this just keeps getting prolonged. Because we looked at all of the things at the same time before and we came up with nothing.
Well, I, I, at least I think what I'm proposing is, is one thing. I mean, if we can't get this thing to work in the next month, then I think we have to move ahead. We have to hope that Stanford doesn't develop Glen Oaks. But at least I feel like I could go to the Leesee who's a serious business guy and say, look, we tried really hard to make this work. We did it our last ditch effort on this. And I guess it feels like it's worth a month to me. I mean, I don't see that, I mean, what, help me flip, I mean, let's flip this around. I mean, other than we're all tired of dealing with this, which, and you guys are, have been dealing with way longer than I have. So I totally appreciate that. But other than the fact that we have to have. Another meeting, another set of public input, and then we have to decide on the housing element. I mean, what else are we losing by putting this out a month?
I am worried about a builder remedy project coming forward.
Okay. Yeah, I agree.
I am worried about lawsuits at some point. I think we, we've built up some good grace with some of these groups over the, over the years because of efforts we've made. I worry that the longer we delay this, the more likely somebody comes forward and seeps us. And that's, that's, that's one of the bigger ones.
Yep.
I do worry about fines. I do worry about HCD at some point coming in and saying, because if it goes beyond a month, it, it, much longer are we going to go? And again, I just don't, I just, I, you know. I just don't, I don't see what we're going to get that's better than what we have. I mean, I, I do feel like we made the best effort.
So on the table, you could take Glen Oaks off and try and balance it with ADUs and trying to supplement it. It may or may not work, but that is one perfectly adoptable approach tonight. It's not purpose and you might not like it, but it is something you could do tonight. You can build in the next few months. And, you know, if HCD, you know, everyone's trying to move forward, but you know, with your other jurisdictions, the, the, those that are. Already ahead of the curve, we're, we'd be in the mix of timing, even if we have a month more for jurisdiction submitting. So I, I'd be very surprised if we're the subject of fines when, you know, it would be unlikely and unfair. It is possible, but you know, how much are we trying to prevent things? Like other jurisdictions haven't submitted their, their, um, final. Element because there's trying to figure out pieces of it, whether it's Woodside with its EIR. Or whether it's other jurisdictions that's trying to hone their, their submission. Let's keep in mind where we are relative to others. We're actually been ahead and that's great. And it represents an enormous effort on our part. But to me. Being overly reactive, you know, I take the vacation point, but honestly, this is important to the town. Um, and I'm not hearing that there's too many other variables that this is going to keep going forward. So from my perspective, yes, let's think about those things, but let's not forget where we are relative to others. And that we're doing things for a good reason if we stop and, and destroy these up. Or if we decide to get a, you know. To just take Glen Oaks off and, and try and supplement, um, in a way that I hear you, HCD might not like. But we have some support for why we think ADUs might be workable. So anyway, that's, I'll stop.
I have, I have two, two comments. One, the only reason, just to be clear, I brought up Laura's vacation is not to say that's more important than the process here. It was more to make everybody understand the timeline that we were on. So that's the only reason I brought that up, just to clarify. Was, you know, looking through my spreadsheet here that I was working with during the, the housing element committee. Trying to think, what are, what are the other ways that we could possibly get to this? I do think that the ADU approach breaks this allocation and which we kept running into problems with before. The only other place here, um, that would, could potentially be in place to opt in. Um, and if there's feeling that, um. There's. You're shaking your head. Pardon me?
We could do more often. That would make people happy.
Oh, well. Making people happy. Uh, what about, uh, I mean, what, we own some land. We own eleven acres here at town center. And that's a lot more than most towns have for their town center. Why don't we just put that on the, on the, some, why don't we just put that on?
That was discussed at length in the Ad hoc committee.
I know.
And, and quite a bit of public comment.
Oh, well, of course.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there's going to be a lot of public comment, but this is, we're looking for, um. Maybe not. And then the other one that I keep thinking about is why can't we just change the zoning on El Mirador's lower acres? I don't understand why we can't do that. If it's three point five acres, uh, on El Mirador, uh, for the lower, the, all the lower acreage. Why can't you just change the zoning to be twenty units per acre, um, ten acres or something in the corner by Springdown? And, and let them, I mean, let one family spot, but it's our legal right. The town. So I, I just, I, you know, obviously, uh, that may seem high handed, but, but it's not quite as high handed. It's just destroying businesses and, and destroying our alpines in Florida. And it has very little effect on them as it, for their quality of life or anything. It's, it's completely away from houses, et cetera. And it's completely away from the San Andreas Fault and it's, it's actually a perfect place. You would probably need the owner to say they have an intent build, Laura. Is that part of the requirement? To change the zoning?
Well, there's different, to include it as a housing element site on the inventory, there's different ways to demonstrate feasibility. And so there's different criteria. One of the main ones is to say that the owner is interested, but we have to demonstrate that it's likely to develop in the eight years.
And correct me if I'm wrong, there's also we thought possibly, a possibility that that site has been donated to the.
There was a lot of discussion about that, but I don't know what the result was, but that, that is one of the things that I heard, yes, that it was going to be donated to Post.
Yeah, I know, I know, but, uh, I.
Not for a short timeline.
This is a not-for-profit situation and they have also obligations for housing, um, at to, to meet public need. I, I, I mean, I, obviously I've been working on this for a long, that is one thing that I have leaked out to over the years. I, I don't think that's insurmountable, but it doesn't seem like it. It's, it's going to happen in eight years. That being said, there, there's no, no value just to change the zoning on that small piece. I mean, I'm talking about ten acres. Isn't that just with a stroke of a pen that you change the zoning?
No, we would have to do environmental review on that. I mean, it wasn't included in the ISM and D. It's a big property with, you know what I mean? Give it its adjacency.
You can't break off a piece like that.
Uh, I mean, no, we'd really have to think about that. We'd have to, you know, review it with the consultant team and see if that needed additional environmental review.
You're also going to learn who the neighbors of that property are, just as we did with all these other sites.
Well, it's us. It, it borders on us and Springdown. That's the only, this is the two borders. It's going to be unpopular. Anyway, anything you do is unpopular.
Just to refocus for where we are with this one though, I mean, that, I, I absolutely think it should be looked at. That is a very long process. I don't think it's realistic, you know, within months right now. And we need to be talking about options that are viable within now.
That's the, that's the feel, that's town council, that's the town center feel. That's the one that's viable right now.
Yeah, but as, as Jeff said, we heard a lot of feedback from community members about that. So we, we have to represent all of the different push points that we've heard throughout the process. And that's the problem with doing them one at a time is you're only hearing about the feedback one at a time. When we went through it as part of the housing element committee, we looked at everything at the same time. Very hard when you do it one at a time.
And there's, there's some kind of, uh, we, nobody understands what the restriction is to, um. To, to doing it with a police station.
We've looked at that site. There's, there's not a whole lot. You can't fit a whole lot of units there. There is an easement issue with access to the property behind it. Part of Springdown, I think, or maybe Mirador. I can't remember. We'll say, and there, we did look at that.
This wasn't enough spaces and the easement combined.
We can, we can fit six units in that location, but there's not a good way to finance that. Yeah, there's.
Not the development, not building it. Who's going to pay to have it built? We could donate the land, but we don't have a developer, a low income developer.
Low, low income. Uh, why, why low income?
We were looking at that as an alternative, um, when we were looking at Fordfield.
Right, but if the task is just to get moderate and above moderate, how then is it the same analysis?
Oh, financially, no, that's different, obviously, but, um, sorry, I was thinking about.
Yeah, yeah, where it came from, but, yeah. But this would be a different substitution.
Yep. There were, there were reasons because of accessibility to with easement. I can't, I'm not going to recall all of that, but.
Yeah, there's a, there's an access easement over that driveway for the property behind that would need to be cleared. So that, I mean, certainly may be possible, um, but.
Without the turnaround back there for pickup and everything like that already.
So your concerns with Glen Oaks, is there, if we set that aside just for a moment, is there anything else in here? Do you step through?
Uh, that seems to make sense to me. The Optin program team, I know we have incentives built in. I, I if you keep that program, and that's what I'm hearing, I would suggest, because this is a experimental program, to take the two meetings, one planning and one ASCC, and turn it into a total of three. One where you have planning and ASCC together, hearing about the project and being able to hear each other, and then they go away and they, they look at the project from two different perspectives one time. I think that might help with understanding the options that are being presented in hearing about it, because no one's ever done this before. I mean, this is a very novel project. Program. So I would suggest that, but, but I liked the idea of being able to have that flexibility something.
Anything else? Any other changes, any other concerns?
I mean, and stuff we've already talked, I mean, extending the full three years in the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And lobbying, I think you said, having a plan and the post adoption.
Yeah, I mean, lobbying feels like post adoption. We also talked about this idea had potentially of this sort of, I'll call it the safety committee or group or whatever it turns into, but, you know, some member of the county, the council, some member of the planning commission sort of driving forwards on the safety stuff, just gone on, with some of that off Laura for a while, just to try to get it down and get at least some of that initial input before it gets, gets back to Laura. But I, I mean, that, these both feel like things that we could put in the post housing and come back. I, I don't feel like tonight we have to agree on it. Like, I, I would be willing to come and discuss these at the time when we come back with the post housing adoption. Even if we haven't agreed on the topic, I trust that you'll at least entertain the conversation. And I, I feel the same thing about the lobbying. You'll entertain it when you can.
Okay, so we, we've one point of contention here is this, one concern is Glen Oaks. That is the one question that people are discussing this conference about. We have a resolution that we could pass tonight if it still shows, so it shows. This would be the time, I believe, and I will, I will, I will call the question in a month to make a motion on approving the housing.
We were not doing it as it is, right? We were.
With the modification, I mean, just leaving Glen Oaks as it is with modifications. Which would be the two full years and the three meetings instead of two, for the Optin?
So I would be willing to make a motion.
Do you have, do you have a?
Yes.
Is there a second? I'm going to second it. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hasko?
No.
Councilmember Hefty?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Yes.
Mayor Offs?
Yes. All right. So we've got a month. We want, we, we've agreed on everything else, and if we can somehow fix this, we fix it in May, and if we can't, then we need to. The re notice, we do to come down and make them.
Well, no, just, let's, I, I guess one thing that I would like to be clear on is, are we keeping this next step exclusively focused on Glen Oaks?
I would propose we don't.
That is one thing, more time means.
I was proposing Glen Oaks, I mean, I'm willing to present, if you, I presume you're listening as well. I'm willing to try to pursue something sort of like what we've talked about tonight, to see if there's any there there.
Yeah, I have a very good relationship with David, but usually also. And, um, but I can't speak to the Stanford part, you can maybe.
Yeah. I mean, I'm supposed to be the liaison, right, but there's been no occasion to.
Yeah.
So if, if the rest of the council is comfortable with the two of us working on this for a month, limited to Glen Oaks, I, I'm, I'm with you there. We've got to keep this contained.
Can I just ask to understand the easement issue here, just as a degree of freedom to Glen Oaks? But it's all about Glen Oaks.
You mean, like, if we could put six in here?
I just want to understand that more, pressure test if that's a piece of the solution, but.
Yeah, I don't understand it either. Is it to Springdown, or is it to, Howard?
I think it's important to understand, and everybody should understand it, and I, I need to be refreshed myself, so of course, you know, but my concern is, it's not just that. It was access to parking, it was the soccer field, it was all the people that were opposed to the soccer field, so. More complicated, okay.
Setting lightly.
If the option is losing the field altogether.
I'm certainly, Judith, as part of post approval, because that's town-owned property when you go through, that's, you know, a possibility. But for this right now, I think it's really.
Yeah, that's fair.
Opening a can of worms.
But that, that's just like a little footnote. I'd like to understand what we know today on that.
Of course, yeah.
We could talk to Laura. I think she'll talk to us. Will you talk to us someday, like, in the next, like, week after this?
Not tomorrow.
Not tomorrow, no, not tomorrow, for sure. Well, when you say not tomorrow, did you mean Thursday or Friday, just to be clear what tomorrow is?
Neither Thursday nor Friday.
Fair enough. Next week, good enough.
Wow.
Um, do we want to continue this public hearing to a date certain, to create some expectation?
Yeah.
Yeah, Cara, I forget how we do that. Do we?
So we just close the public hearing?
Oh, okay, well then, let's just have the expectation. Right? So we have a shared expectation for the May 10 meeting.
Right.
Okay.
And so in terms of noticing for hearing and the number of days?
So we'll renotice it then?
Or renotice?
Yeah, no problem.
Aside from whatever.
Yeah, we, we are going to have to do a fair amount of work on the home of shelters and the supportive housing zones. I seem to remember a three-page checklist that we have to put together.
So hopefully, our consultant team can help us with that, and then that probably costs us another, you know, $5,000.
Howard.
Or are we? Yeah, so, so you've got the report in the, in the, back in front of you. I believe it reflects what we, the group sort of arrived in our closed session last week.
And then, under, under the Brown Act, we need to publicly state the terms of the contract. And so the terms of this contract would be to appoint Howard Young as the interim town manager and, and for a period of six months, which can be extended or shortened upon council's direction. He will also be serving as the Public Works Director during that interim period. There is a expectation that about 60% of his duties will be dedicated to town manager and 40% dedicated to public works. And he will be receiving a 10% premium for the extra duties that he will be taking on. And following the end of that period, he will return to his full duties as Public Works Director.
Thank you, Cara. A question. Is there public comment on this? Rita?
Well, Howard, I'm not sure if I should say congratulations, but congratulations to you and, and your family. And perhaps somebody might be able to answer about the status of town clerk or who is serving in that capacity to help you, Howard. We look forward to your answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristy Corley.
Yeah, congratulations, Howard. You've been around 20 years, and we feel like you know our town, and but you are interim manager. I didn't know who to text during this meeting. I needed to hear a number of people a bit louder. As the night goes on, you, you, the mic goes away, and we could not hear many times, especially the mayor. So we need to know who to text during a meeting to let you know that, and I, I was don't know who to do that, do that to anymore, since we don't have a clerk. Thank you.
Can I ask, who is acting as town clerk at the moment? Because we don't have one right now, that is, it's been split between whoever can do it, Miss Cory, before. We have an interim who's starting Monday. We will have an interim town clerk come, give your name.
Now, we're also tired.
There will be an interim town clerk starting on Monday. At the moment, I, I guess Cory, Cory, our assistant town, Cory Stocker, our assistant town manager is, is probably our best contact, so we will be announcing that shortly. Jerry Welch.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I keep trying to unmute it, and it wouldn't unmute. Just want to give a very hearty congratulations to Howard. There couldn't be a better person to fill in. You have the town knowledge, you have the dedication, and you're always there for all when the time comes. I hope that you will even consider the position, because I think you'd be terrific at it. And I just want to thank all of you for the time and the commitment that you've made. And I really feel that this council is listening to the people. And I think that's important, and then you're weighing both sides of any issue. But I do want to stress the importance that we don't want to lose our equestrian partners out here, and we share our community with not just Portola Valians, but the entire Bay Area, the peninsula especially. So it's more than just a bicycle route and trails to walk on. Many people come here specifically because there are facilities. So I, I really, I'm really in favor of keeping the equestrian land that Stanford owns. As was said this evening, we've already lost the one across the street, the wedge, so those are my thoughts. And thank you again. Appreciate all that you guys are doing.
Thank you. That's last a public comment. Nobody, there is no one in the room anymore. Discussion, or I could take a motion?
I would make a motion if there's any discussion.
On second.
Okay, moved by Taylor, seconded by Wernicke. Is there any discussion? I, I, for one, I'm, I'm happy that, excited that Howard is, is, is willing and eager to take on this job and, and welcome him and pending this vote, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Howard.
Hold on, hold on, roll call, roll call vote.
Yeah.
Call or roll?
Let's go. Councilmember Hasko?
Aye.
Councilmember Hefty?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Aye.
Mayor Offs?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Okay, let's let everyone go to bed. The, the agency reports are included, are, are here. Going to suggest that we table them and adjourn.
Okay.
Back in.
All in favor?
Favor, aye.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Thank you.